Do all your insurance needs, home, auto, life, health, or commercial, contact Peggy J. King Insurance Incorporated at 205-921-1616. Or stop by the office located at 370 Bexar Avenue West in Hamilton, Alabama, right next to the Clyde Nick's Public Library. Peggy J. King Insurance, where everybody is somebody special.
Thank you, Lord, for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. With this great that you forgive us of our many shortcomings, show us the way that you'd have us to go. It's favored well to beg, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Pledge allegiance has got even more important since when? Lately, it should have been important all the time, but it's gotten more important lately to all of us. We are... Bob's not here and Kenny's off sick. Bob's on his way out of the car. We just go... I guess... Let's see now, they was gonna let you start first, let. Okay, you go ahead, Judge Vittany.
Let me introduce to you Austin Jones. Austin was a member of the 252 Transportation Company, which is the local Hamilton National Guard company that was deployed in Korea. And I think it's noteworthy that we have still about half those members are alive. About half of them are now dead. I think there's 122 that were deployed and there's 64. 64 on the list, so really over half are now dead. And as you know, those that served in the Greatest Generation, World War II, just dying out every day. And I think it's important that we acknowledge this unit. And I'll tell you more about it here in a second. But it's important, I think, to the history of Marion County. As y'all know, the National Guard Armory was torn down here. It was moved to Haidable, the 877th, which is a heavy construction engineering unit. And hopefully, we'll get an army back here someday. But in the interim, I think it's very important that these citations, and I'm gonna go through and explain them to you, be displayed in a prominent place. And I don't know of any other place better than the Marion County Courthouse, already by the front entrance, where each branch of service has been so honored in a really nice display, which I think y'all approved five, six years ago. But as far as the 252 Transportation Company, they're the... This is twoman right there. They're the only National Guard unit in the state of Alabama that has ever received a presidential citation. And more important than that, the way that presidential citation reads, and you can read it right there, is for quote, "for extraordinary heroism under enemy fire." And they're not talking about other members of the 2nd Infantry Division, which they were assigned to. They're talking about this unit right here, that Mr. Jones was a part of. They were attached to the 2nd Infantry Division. I happen to know, through my study of military tactics, that 2nd Infantry Division was the main division that when the Red Chinese started their assault into northern Korea, that the 2nd Infantry Division was faced with 12 Red Chinese divisions to their front. And they fought those 12 Red Chinese divisions outnumbered, basically 12 to 1, but over 120,000 Red Chinese on the front lines, and over 200,000 Red Chinese in reserves, with one division, and that division being supported by the unit from here in Hamilton. And that's why the Chief of Staff of the Army awarded the Presidential Citation to the 252. We do have one other thing that we wanted to... We've got the citations here. There's a picture of all the members of that group. And there's also another picture of them at the train station, I think in Geouin, right before they left, which we want to include, which will be about the size of that over there. And then the thing that we don't have, that we're gonna get framed, is the proclamation or resolution of the Alabama House of Representatives, where it's acknowledged, whereas the 252 Transportation Truck Company is the only Alabama National Guard unit to ever be awarded the Presidential Citation. So I think those are important documents to the history of this county. I would like to see, hopefully, these put on one side of the display that we already have. And on the other side, I'd like to see a display for those in the 877th from this area that served in Afghanistan and Iraq. And we haven't developed that yet, but these are ready to be put up if the council says or the commission says.
And I thank my honor to be able to put them up.
And Austin, if you got anything you wanna add, I mean, he was the guy on the ground, not me. I was just going out, but John covered it. We were bear forcement to be as successful as we were, contributing our efforts. But we certainly would appreciate... We have a group of fellows that's dedicated. We get together and we talk about this. We would certainly appreciate it.
Motion to do that, put them up.
I'll say.
I'll say. Aye, that's done. And I was gonna tell y'all too. I would add, in the time stately, there was three different days of articles of prisoners of war. The Chinese came in and captured a bunch of Americans in here. It was about one from Tennessee, one from Michigan. It was buddies. And when you mentioned the Chinese taking North Korea, coming in and doing a lot... It's a good... It's like reading a book. And it's in three different sections in three days. They put it in and I read it over there. And it's just like sitting down and reading a book. So it was really, really interesting.
But to sit down and read this is like reading a book too, because you're reading history.
Two days, two days... I mean, two years they stayed prisoners.
If y'all don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and take these. I've been blocking them in my office. And when we get the additional ones that we wanna put up, I'll get Shane.
You get Shane and show him how you want it and get it all put up. You go ahead.
If you talk about POW, when I was 11 years old, Harold Ross, from a brilliant area, came back. He had been a POW in Korea. And he gave a very inspirational speech to a congregation in the Free Water Brigo Baptist Church where we attended. And he could not tell you what his diet was, by his face.
That goes into detail in this newspaper about all of that. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Okay, next we got Philip Weaver with yellow dot. He's... I had went over a little bit of this with Roger Hayes, and I wanted him to come and talk to the whole commission about the life of this program and what it does.
Like I said, I'm Philip Weaver, I'm the Fire Chief for Haidable. And the way this program come about, the state sponsors it. It's a very good program. The mayor brought it to me. And I asked him, you just gotta know my mayor. I asked him, I said, "Do you wanna do this?" And he said, "If I didn't wanna do it, I wouldn't have brought it to you." So anyway, I had to get on board with it. But it's a very beneficial program. There's 42 counties doing it now. There's a... They wanna finish out this year to 50 counties. And next year, they wanna finish and get all 67 counties. This brochure that I give you is Winston Counties. I decided to get with Roger Hayes, Chairman of Winston County, and decide to do the whole county, where we can not only cover Haidable, but we cover the whole county and take care of more people. But basically what it is, it's this little packet right here. This little folder. And then it's this piece of paper right here. And it's got all your medical information, your picture on it and everything. This goes in your glove compartment. Like if you got to give your wife, there'd be one for her and one for you. And then this little yellow dot goes on the rear of your window.
She's young. Hey, if you would give her all that.
I've only got copies.
I'll...
I have two.
And I'll give y'all copies if you want. But anyway, it's just a few minute process. Now, a decka puts it on. A decka furnishes the, I think, three printers and three cameras they'll give you for the county. The whole county. But they furnish all these, and they furnish all these, and they furnish all the dots. The rest, they'll tell you, it's not gonna cost any money. They got a simple brochure like this. But the county, they tell them on the back that Winston County Commission, Town Addison, Town Harley, Town Double Springs, Town Lynn, the city of Haidable, they went in and paid for this brochure. You know, y'all can do it any way you want. But like I said, it's real beneficial. I've seen the time, because I've been doing this business a long time. I've seen times when it would help. And it wasn't really important. I mean, it was a good program, but it wasn't important to me until you have health problems. And then it becomes really important. But... So what we done, we got with the commission, and then they had the mayors meet with all the mayors. And then unfortunately, I got picked for the guy to do it all. And that's the way we got it started. So I'd like to get it started. I'm trying to get it started in Marion County. A lot of y'all citizens in Marion County has already got them because they're coming to Haidable to do them. Because a lot of our city limits and a lot of my fire coverage area is in Marion County. Probably two-thirds of it. And if y'all wanted to, you can, if you do a brochure like this, the places that you sign up, Winston Counties, Addison Town Hall, Harley Town Hall, Double Springs Town Hall, Lynn Town Hall, and then Haidable Fire Department. They would like for you to do places like that that's open during the day, instead of your little volunteer departments where there's nobody there. But now, they can help spread the word. But if y'all do it and you want to, you can put Haidable on there as a sign up for Marion County. So people from Bear Creek, White House, down that way can come to Haidable and sign up. And we sign up, we do it Monday through Friday, eight to five. We also, if there's a big group, like a church or something, this stuff is mobile. But you can take it and go to the festival or whatever. But our mayor, he pays for... They'll tell you, there's not a lot of costs. And it's not a lot. But our mayor, and I think the other towns, he pays for our paper, our photo papers, do our pictures, and our ink for our print. So that's the biggest cost. I know I talked to Hamilton's new mayor. I went to y'all's firefighter association meeting. They was all excited about it. Hamilton's Fire Chief told me that the city of Hamilton was gonna do it with the rest of the county down there or not. And I know I talked to the sheriff, and he's ready to get on board with it. So, you know, if y'all remember how y'all wanna do it, that's just the way we done it. I think I've signed up about maybe 600 or 700 people so far. And it don't matter ever how many vehicles you have. If you got five vehicles, we'll do every vehicle. But I'm not gonna read the whole thing, y'all can all read.
So what did you say the cost of it was?
You can call Roger on these. I didn't get in on this, the mayors and the...
But this is all the cost.
This right here was the cost. Having the brochure done. And then after, they give you so much paper and so much ink. And you could do them in black and white if you wanted to save money. But we do them in picture paper and cover. That's the cost. And then, of course, we go all over the place and do it. It's a good program. It's well worth its time and effort. Does anybody got any questions? Now, I'll hang around if you need me. She's a waiverer, does it. She's not even getting the mail. I can give you her phone number.
I apologize for running late. But I think I've got the gist of what she said here, and we'll look into it and consider it and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll monitor you soon. You're listed here. You have a fire department.
Yeah, I don't mind helping you, but y'all need somebody to, over in this area or something, to head it up.
I know, but we'll use you.
Yeah, I can help. I'll help them any way, any way I need them.
But Barry's gonna go. Barry is gonna go to Hamilton.
Barry said that y'all... Hamilton's new mayor said they was gonna do it for the rest of the county. But I like the idea about the whole county, because we get the whole county covered, plus you split it up. It ain't all, all the birds ain't all one.
Appreciate you.
Thank y'all.
North Alabama Arts Council, the President and the Chairman, Holden.
I'm Carrie Bolton, I'm the President of the North Alabama Arts Council. And we're here to request the use of the Hanger for the Jerry Brown Arts Festival coming up, March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, 2013. And Aunt is our logistics person. And if you have any questions, I'll turn it over to Aunt.
Well, thank you, Carrie. I'll be traveling to Montgomery to peer before a peer review committee, State Arts Council. This is in regards to our request for a grant for Jerry Brown Arts Festival. Every year, they ask me a simple question. Where are you having your festival? Now, this is our 11th year. Jerry Brown needs no introduction to Montgomery. He is one of the featured artists throughout Alabama and the Arts Council and the Smithsonian and everything. And they keep asking me, "Why don't you have a permanent facility?" Now, every year, we grow. As far as recognition, we have just been rendered the honor of being a top 20 festival in the Southeast United States for the month of March 2013. What this does, the publicity from this agency, the Southeast Tourism Association, goes out to 12 states. This invites artists, gets other artists interested to come to Hamilton, since we're the first, one of the first festivals out in the festival year. And we have access to these artists which we would not have before. We expect something like, application wise, we'll get between 100 and 120 applications for people wanting to participate in our show. These are your artists. Now, we don't allow crowds or anything. The State Art Council of Arts will send a representative up here, as they do every year, and go through to make sure that we're complying with all the regulations they set forth to be a pure art type festival and not just a general festival with arts in crowds and anything else you can put out there. We're very restricted in what we can and cannot do. We would like to have the Hanger the week before the festival. Reason being is that we're all volunteers. We come in afternoons, after everybody gets off of work. We come in, we do the cleanup, we do the organization, we do the layouts, we clean the outside. And we always have your support and any support of helping us clean the outside, because we are representing Hamilton. We'll represent Marion County. Last year, we had artists come from eight different states. We expect between 2,005 to 4,000 over a two-day period. That number will vary. It's just the approximate number, because we worry about three things. One, temperature and wind and rain. We won't get stressed at all. Good rain and more people, of course. But we have worked with you before on this project and using your facility. You've been very supportive. You made, you as sister does, to making it a very successful festival to recognize Hamilton, Jerry Brown, Marion County. And I think you have found that we will carry our weight as far as preserving the facility, cleaning the facility, and living it is good. If you don't bet your shit, they won't be fine. So we certainly appreciate your consideration. Again, I will have to tell them, I will have to address the issue, our location of our festival tomorrow in Montgomery. And we also have to send out our applications, which we're two weeks behind now, to our artists, our consideration. We must give them as many time and place for our festival. So your favorable consideration will be most appreciated. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, you're right. You do a good job cleaning before and after. And it's getting bigger every year. And I went last year, really, I was really excited about it. And it's highlighted in Marion County, so I'm for it and you have it.
Everyone benefits. Although we're here in Hamilton, everyone benefits. Just something to agree with.
We also realize that we're not sure how long, I mean, that building could become used for something else also. Now, I mean, as far as, we think we can give you some definite word on it. But there was a gentleman a day who was interested in the building. So I don't think there'd be any... We put Charles here to tell us better about it. Certainly, if the building is empty in Haidable, it's been a good deal for...
Well, it's always been a very positive working relationship going by the commission, the Arts Council, and our city and everything. And I assure you that we're able to work the logistics side of it. We'll be able to work with you in any situation that comes up. We know that if you can sell the facility or lease it or whatever, yes, we know that that is a situation that we must encounter. But we're willing to work with you any way we can to make this a very positive example for the commission or our area of the Arts Council.
I'm almost sure that this year, I see no problem. I'm gonna say we put Charles here. He's got his schedule on this, that I'm sure we can... You say you got a note tomorrow?
Well, I would like to be able to tell them exactly where we're having it, you know, because they're gonna ask me.
I don't know why they're gonna need a...
I don't know. It occurs every year. They know we're growing. We know that we're getting positive publicity throughout the Southeast United States. We're slowly being one of the highlighted festivals in Alabama. Slower than cherry. And then they wanna know how we're handling it and, you know, what we're presenting and things like that. They're pretty thorough.
I see no reason not to count on it does. And I mean, unless something that we don't know about comes up or, you know, that means that we'll be a victim.
Sure, I understand that. Things can change in a heartbeat. We understand that.
So I know no reason why you can't, you know, give you the permission to use it again.
I can always address it as a tentative situation.
I mean, we need a motion to the fact that as far as we know, here, without any foreseen, something comes in that we don't know about, that certainly we appreciate y'all.
Yeah, we'll just take it year by year.
And we have a motion without second.
Yeah.
I may want to have a city center maybe, but tell them.
All favorable.
I thank you so very much.
But I see where it would be difficult, you know, having a permanent place because we using it. Of course, the more you'd use it, it'd be hard to have a permanent place.
Just about one event alone, yes, I understand that. But hopefully, we'll have a city center for multiple agencies to do so whatever.
Yes, we appreciate the effort y'all put out and what you do.
We cannot do what we do without the support of the commission, because we have nowhere else to go, I'll be honest with you. It's large enough to house us. And if we ever stop our growth, then we'll start downhill. I mean, less artists will apply, because they know they can't get in because of limitations of space. And only then three years of festival dissipate because of lack of interest. But we thank you for your support, and we want to keep that as positive for our city, our county as well. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all, thank y'all. NACODA people, I don't see the NACODA people.
I was just... And let me say that Charles Babb has been real sick. And he, I called him, talked to him about that. He's not interested in serving again, so I'm gonna have to find somebody in his place. But we could go and appoint Ray San and Aden Kimbrough.
Do these need to be separate appointments or one-on-one? Can we put them one? Okay, now your motion, will you report Ray San and Aden Kimbrough to the NACODA report board here?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, now a motion, I have second.
Second.
All favorable, say aye.
Aye.
One, same, so we'll see about replacing Mr. Babb.
Motion to reappoint Aden Kimbrough.
Oh, we did.
Oh, you done both of them? I thought she said they were one in the town. But I've come up with one to replace Charles Babb in the future, and we'll appoint him then later.
So we need to go on this severe weather preparedness tax holiday in the county. You, you got any information about that with?
No, you do need to vote to adopt that tax holiday. But this is just that state tax holiday that we did. I think it was back in the summer, when they first started it last year. They started it in the summer, but then going forward, it was gonna be in February. And it's just like that back-to-school tax holiday. This allows people to go by weather-preparedness gear without sales tax burden.
Are you aware of what all they put in this? I mean, I know it's...
It's still like flashlights and batteries and all that kind of stuff.
Well, this make two holidays per year, two weekends per year. Or is this, did we do one this year?
We did one in 2012. But my understanding was, I thought it was just gonna start in February and that was it.
This is gonna start being two tax-free holidays. One's gonna be for storms, severe weather preparedness, and one's supposed to be...
But I would get it, but it's not two different weekends.
How do our Chamber of Commerce is filled up?
We can't do that.
Are they... The Chamber of Commerce, like you would say, they endorse these?
I don't know.
Being their business representative?
It's a specific position on it.
Can we table this and look into it? Now your motion.
Motion to table.
Second.
All first, aye. Here are the financial statements.
Under tax season reminder is the 2011 through 2012 yearly financial statement for the fiscal year that we just finished. This is the financial statement that y'all could be a chair that we publish in the newspaper.
Please sit. This will be published, like, for financial statements.
And we don't have to tie the paper, do we? I'll have them away.
So now your motion, we submit this. So there are motions, we submit this, uh, as written in our book here, it'll be published, our financial statement for two thousand thirteen. And we have a second?
Y'all say.
Fair, say aye?
Aye.
Both likewise. Would we vote on this, this, uh, this, uh, contract date with Johnson Control, or look at it?
If I'm wrong, I'd make a recommendation to go into executive session to discuss the potential legal issues on that, if y'all want to go on today.
If what, do I hear a motion, we go into taking a session, uh, with name character or individual, or, uh?
I like that motion. And that's for potential litigation issues, potential litigation issues.
Potential litigation, or how long?
Addie Kimmy wants it by fifteen minutes.
No, fifteen, sorry.
You'll be doing your own. That, that never works, telling you...
I won't leave y'all so late.
Yeah, okay.
And you got my number, if y'all need any, just call me, I'll get out your hair, thank y'all.
Thanks, Senator. He's talking about, that I was doing a ten blocks, it was way on the nail. How y'all doing?
They get there.
All right. I, I can't get them to come out.
You talking about the yellow dot thing?
Yeah.
I don't need to print it on a fax, you just make a phone copy. There ain't no, there ain't no cost, there's no cost to this.
No, we, we can...
I, I got the thing, and why, why do you need to...
We can do that without spending money, now.
Do I have a motion, we go back in and regurgitate? Second?
Yes, sir.
All fair, say aye?
Aye.
So we'll... Ten o'clock? This all will be as broke as it ever?
Yes, sir.
Could you, uh? I'd like to go with these, I'll, I'm here. I have three bids, is that all?
Our engineer won't let that no more.
Yes.
You know, you need a motion, fine.
Uh, no, uh, I don't wanna do, you wanna look deep, brookie on my shot, but, uh, I don't, to, they'll read them, but...
I wanna be able to look at them in the afternoon and tomorrow, and then based off of that, award it. There's several different options that we can take. There's three bids, one's for Rayco, one's for RJ, and one is for stationery.
Uh, we can go with the, uh, this is the total bid here, and then you can, uh, then you can look at and see if that, that's all thing for equal. Total bid for a three-year lease per machine per month, one ninety-nine and ninety-nine.
Which, which company?
Uh, purchase price at the end of lease is a hun, a dollar. Total bid for purchase for all five is thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars from Rayco Incorporated, car in Mississippi. Total of thirty-four thousand five hundred. Have they got a copy of the, the, in here of the, the tab, copy? Total for, uh, RJ Young Company. Total bid for three-year lease purchase per machine per month, a hundred and ten dollars and twenty-five cents. Purchase bid price for end of lease is five hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Total bid for purchase of all five is seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. RJ Young, North Gloucester Street, Tupelo, Mississippi.
I don't know what that is.
Tanners and Stachianers Incorporated, Port Street, Florence, Alabama. Total bid for three-year per lease is a hundred ninety-six thirty-seven. Purchase price at the end of lease is none, zero. Total bid for purchase of all five, eighteen thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars.
Eighteen sixty-four?
Eighty-five. Now, there's things written in all these things, what Brooks give her a chance to look at and say it's all, all the things, I'll take them into consideration, Rachel, so... Do I have a motion that we allow look brook, um, uh, base a bid on her recommendations?
I might motion to, to approve this upon her approval of everything being that it's supposed to be, and I'll say it.
All hears aye? All opposed likewise, so I would probably a week or less for... Okay. So we'll, soon as, soon as possible, uh, contact you, gentlemen, and let you know that I appreciate your bids, and, uh, you have your time.
Bro, where, is that a copy bid? Where, where are the, uh, copy companies?
Oh, God. Get all that in.
I don't have that paper, but I can, that's a, you know, just, just, just grab the good web name, and we can have time to go.
Airport tax delay, so you gonna address with some...
Yes, sir. Um, I recommend if county commission adopts a resolution, whereas Marion County Commission intends to provide for state matching funds for an airport improvement project for Marion County Regiment Department during the fiscal year two thousand thirteen. This will be the, um, tax away lighting project, and the resolution authorized the county engineer to submit an application on behalf of county commission. Total estimated project cost is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
And, uh?
The whole project's taken?
Whole project.
And that's what happened, how, what can I say, it's a long way in.
Um, it's, we, we get some, we get some, painted refresh and markings of the day, the runway is getting, showing some signs of distress. And actually, we met with the state the other day, and that's probably gonna be the next big project we do to renovate our runway. Hopefully, within the next three years, we'll have to, one thing we need to talk about, how we're gonna come up with a master, if we're looking about a million dollar project on that, but to answer your question, it's, it's beginning to show some signs of deterioration.
I should know, after this grant, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, do I have a second?
One second.
Uh, question, uh, what, what is the lead, what kind of match?
Ninety-five-five, the, the, the county...
Five percent of ours, we know we'll get that.
Nineteen, I'm sorry, five percent. Our part will be fourteen thousand dollars, and Albon will pay fourteen, and the FAA will be two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, any other question? All fair, say aye? Both likewise, so please, ask that you submit that. Uh, let's see, I will...
Resolution?
End looks approved.
This is the, the changes that y'all made back in May, and then adding the new, uh, drug policy, and, and, you know, we, we've made those changes, and now we're just ready to incorporate into the book to actually go out to the boys.
Was ready, go to print? Who, who, uh, that we, who will do the printing?
Well, that's a choice, y'all have, we can send it someplace and have it to it in a booklet, or we can print it ourselves and get one of those little bonders, and get it in a binder, so it's your choice.
Right here it is.
Yeah, good question, man.
Oh, we ain't got time to read it.
I guess I'll give it a little bit of binder.
But would it be, uh, security in this manner, we could do ourselves, or take back all this, we can blow it all away?
Well, the employee has to sign on two or three different sheets of paper in the back, so it's really more convenient if we print it ourselves on an ass needed basis, and you put it in a binder.
And you say, they might cheat, just cause, like...
Yeah, we wouldn't have overspending.
What desire of the group, do I print it ourselves, do I motion we print it ourselves?
I might motion.
Your motion, do they print, uh, uh, second?
Second, I might motion.
Uh, second? Okay, all fair, say aye? Both likewise, so, so we... Uh, as I say, that looks like it, uh, completes our agenda for today. Any other, uh, word for a week, John?
We keep that sound, labels, cause any of you, we start us off.
Well, we need to sign a bill for a week, John. Okay, do I have a motion in the journal?
I might.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All fair, say aye? Okay.